I would disagree that the city will be liable when it's... My understanding is there are, the city does have easements to get in there and actually maintain these ponds already. So, it seems like you're taking on risk without gaining anything that you don't already have, but if you take ownership of it, it's clear to the world who's responsible for the pond. And, on the flip side, to help Mr. Gilmore, I mean, that increases your control. So, you take on liability, but you do have absolute control of that one. So, it's the balance of the risk of the city. The city is willing to take. And you might, the city may make a better decision if they control it, to actually go in there and keep it. It may be challenging to give the easement and the access rights to get in there and do what the city wants to do. But, from a legal perspective, my thoughts were you're taking on absolute risk without gaining anything that you don't already have.
Oh, my turn? Totally agree with that, okay? But, as far as I'm concerned, there's the absolute legal liability and then there's the political liability.
And I don't weigh in on politics. I don't weigh in on politics. I'm not running for election.
I think Matt's absolutely correct, but I believe that when this coin, you know, I don't know when or where, but it's gonna happen and they'll be, they'll be coming back at you.
Well, either way, like you saying, if something happened, then they're gonna be looking at it anyway. You know what I mean? That, that's gonna happen.
I, I, I think so. And, as we, you know, Matt and I have talked about this for a while and totally can understand and appreciate his point about the total liability. I just don't think usually, when everything's all said and done, that we'll wind up back stuck a little bit.
If we have an easement already... And when the city say, "We own that and we don't have any questions about it."
Is this something you could see consensus on? Or are we... No, if you get consensus, we'll proceed on the process.
I have two.
I am too.
Okay.
How many do you have?
3B3, discussion of timber processing.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Row Tem and other members of council, you may remember that we had briefed, or had talked about one of the work sessions, in fact, it's our August 17th work session, about a proposal from Twin Rivers Land and Timber Inc., Mr. Crosby, you remember that? Came in and talking about a service that he was interested in providing primarily to serve one of our major companies in Perry, in Perry, quite not exclusively. So, you all have directed the administration to go back and take a look at that. I provided to you the administration's recommendations plus some backup material. The summary of it is that the administration recommends council, "Okay," proceeding with Mr. Crosby, a proposal subject to that it would be having access coming in off of Big Indian Creek Drive, which is just off of Martin Luther King and, uh, knife over on Ball Street side, 'cause that's where, you may remember, our operations are gonna be and I do not want to mix the two operations.
Should we clear that up with its off of Martin Luther King Drive because Big Indian Creek Drive is on Ball Street as well? It goes all the way through, so should we clear it up so that access is gonna be on Martin Luther King?
Yes.
Cause I had that question.
And there are also other series of conditions to be noticed in there, you know, insurance, security, so on and so forth, rental alone. And if you all are agreeable with this, then we would proceed contacting, excuse me, Twin Rivers to see if they're agreeable with it. If they basically are, then a contract that we should put together to deal with that.
I read all these proposals. It is the last one to place side in living, stop off with. I don't want a legal mess for us to have to clean up.
That would be in there.
That needs to be in there. It's not in there. I read them, but I can't remember.
Yes, they are responsible for leasing the site and they would also be, we'll make sure that's, they were responsible for cleaning up if they decide to cease operations.
They leave it just like they found it, clean it.
Hopefully, they'll leave it cleaner. You should be down there to take a look, yeah?
When anyway, you know, bring in a whole bunch of stuff and then walk off and leave it, bust part, clean it.
Right.
3B4, request to view GD.com.
Thank you. Council members, I provided in your packet an email from Tyler Peake with Georgia DOT, District Traffic Engineer. You may remember that for a long time, we had talked about possibly shifting US 341 off of Main Street and Ball, you remember that? And, we finally got a semi-okay, at least to approach it, from DOT. At that time, and we responded back last time we had the conversation, we talked about taking 341 off of everything basically within Perry Parkway. Ever remember that? The primary one affected by that would've been Sam Nun. As you may have noticed here, Mr. Peake has come back and said that, at least far as his office is concerned, that seems to be okay, except they still want to keep the state route designation on Sam Nun Boulevard coming down to Conner Street, or State Route 127, which is okay, apart from concern. And, but if we also wanted to do that, we would then need to send a formal request to the DOT commission. So, the administration's recommendation would be to follow up on the advice from Mr. Peake and we'd send something to the DOT commission requesting that designation change.
3B5, consider special events coordinator position.
Thank you. Mayor and council, we would like to propose to you about considering hiring either on contractual basis or a part-time basis, a special events coordinator. You may have noticed, we have a number of programs and activities that are coming in now, or existing, for example, Buzzers Drop or Perry Music Festival, or some new ones that are talked about coming in. And we, and all these things are primarily done to increase the visibility of the city and more tourist and folks coming into the city. And it follows along a long time goal and objective, which we're starting to see, about having events every month to bring people into the city. So, a lot of that has, there has to be some type primarily administrative coordination. I'm not talking about taking anything away at all from any of the volunteers that come out to do this stuff, but, you know, somebody to make sure that the check is set and the check on the insurance, you know, all those administrative type of functions and everything. Which currently is all being handled by someone from some city department. And with this ever increasing load, I think that that's gonna cause some conflicts or delays and problems with our own existing staff. So, the recommendation to you would, to you all would be to explore this. Now, we wouldn't finalize it till we came back and got you the information and recommendation and you made the final decision, but we would like your concurrence to explore this options and come back to you. This would be paid for from the restricted portion of the hotel motel tax, which is for tourism, development, whatever that hotel motel tax is for.
I don't have any problem exploring it, but I sure wanna know how much it's gonna cost.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a part-time person wanting to put city down that could assume these responsibilities?
No. All the, all the contact and everything that's done is by full-time city employees. We have some, a whole series of other primary responsibilities. And if it was just one event, I'd say, "Okay." You know, but we're being very successful and we're getting event after event after event, and I think most of them are going to be, continue to be successful. The other concern I have is some of the historic ongoing events is that we could face a situation where there's no one to handle that. I'll give you an example. The Christmas parade, you know, that we've had, you know, some of y'all have been on council for a while, may remember that there are a whole series of different groups, you know, originally handling that Christmas parade and one by one, year after year, they have dropped off on hand up. And, so if you, if you don't have any, for example, volunteer group, as you may remember for, while Houston Springs, you know, sponsored the Christmas parade and is currently handled now by the J.C.'s, you know, and...
The J.C.?
Yes.
You know, you had J.C.'s in town.
Point. So...
Oh, Kiwanis.
No, Kiwanis has the fall parade, you know, which is this coming weekend. But, that's another good example, you know, you could have a deal about where the Kiwanis Club just says, you know, enough is enough, you know, we can't or we won't or whatever the case may be. And I don't think we want to be in a situation about not being able to continue on with these popular events or to have to cancel, you know, them at a potential request, you know. So, that's the rationale why I speak for you now too.
I mean, I don't wanna know what costs too, but I think that this is a good idea. I envision this being similar to what we've done on social media and communication in terms of somebody having, you know, a real special focus, making, helping these events run as efficiently and it's, it is the most possible thing. So, you know, pending knowing what else is involved, it's a good idea.
You ready?
Yeah, I agree. I remember this shit.
You know, if you look at, most of the Main Street organizations who have highly successful Main Street programs, under their promotion group, there is somebody that works for the city, that works for that promotion group to make sure these things come off professionally, rather than, oh, well, depend on this group of 14 volunteers and only three of them show up, because they all have different reasons to exist. So, I mean, I think this is a good coordination role. And, Main Street, everything you read about says, "Main Street director should not be the debt planner." There's other things that that person needs to be doing to grow family and stuff. I think you're looking to see, that's most of the more to come back with a formal proposal of what it costs and what the responsibility that person can do.
Is that all good?
Yep.
Yes, it's good. 3B6, proposed job classification.
Thank you. Council members, in your packet is a follow-up to previous discussion that we've had with, for the job description for assistant city manager position, and then also for that position, what the primary duties and areas that they would be responsible for, which I believe follows up on the discussions that I've had with each of you, and I would recommend to you all to authorize to proceed.
Are they agreeable?
How many cities the size of Perry has an assistant city manager? I'd like to know that. And if so, how much are they paying you for? This looks like a lot of money on assistance. I mean, you do such a good job.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, I was, I was told, Jeff, the reason we're saying this is that we're not going to hire a public works director, which we were trying to hire, but this person is gonna take responsibility, direct responsibility for that, along with other line management and so, you're not gonna hire the public works director, you're just gonna hire this person to learn the aspects of the city and the first aspect is he's gonna run the public works department. So, that's a, to me, it's a trade-off. Instead of hiring the public works, I don't think anybody's saying we hire public works and assistant city manager, but one of the other.
I see these duties are, are, it's to stand into many areas. I think it's a, after the list was put together, I think it's a good idea.
3B7, consider names of Third Street and J.C.'s park sites.
Thank you. You just saw the presentation, you know, today, on the two park sites that we had talked about in the past, about any name, or naming each of those parks. You would authorize us through social media to get public input, you may remember that was presented to you. And, at least from the administration standpoint, the selling names are okay, you know, there may be some others, so I have provided to you proposed names, though certainly to change in any way that you want. This was on your last work session agenda and we did ask you to be ready to go. Administration doesn't have any particular favorite or wed to any particular name. What I do think is important, like we talked about before, is that the parks get named, so you can start having a reference. You know, for example, we're, it's a lot easier now for folks to actually start thinking about Perry's park, you know, not the project on 341, 'cause the park's got a name, so you don't have to go out and see it. Since we're gonna be having the construction starting pretty soon on these things, I think it'd be good to have them named, so.
Third Street Park, kinda like Crossroads, it's not even Serenity, that's just me. I'm just throwing that out there. Crossroads was a heavy selection and I don't, I don't see Third Street being a very strong...
Traffic, I care of.
But I can...
There's those trees, you know?
Oh, yeah. See, right there. But I, you know, I think we, we look at Crossroads, it carries a little bit of our history, but it doesn't interfere with our brand that we're trying to change. People still identify, they still fuss at us about, you know, with Crossroads, we are a crossroads of Georgia. I think, you know, we wanna carry some of that legacy to that park.
I love Legacy Park. I think that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Fits in the right...
Yeah, that's perfect. That's good.
And I really like the Crossroads because it does make a point, that we, we've been saying it all the time, and bam, there it is, and we'll have something named that fit right in the city of Perry. And I love the legacy.
Is everybody agreeable with that?
Come on, we're crying.
It's fine with me.
3B8, consider plan for adding emergency generators to certain...
Thank you. Mayor and council, as I'm sure you remember, we were very fortunate when Tropical Storm Irma came through, however, it did point out a need for us to take a look at some of our comparative, more remote, but not exclusively lift stations, to avoid any type of problems, particularly on some of the frequent load. I have provided to you a list of proposed locations for emergency generators to be installed, starting with Bear Branch Road, you see the mail or familiar with that? What I'm requesting from you right now is that you authorize the administration to proceed with getting some of the design work done with that, some estimated cost, and then we'll come back to you to get your suggestions about prioritizing and which ones to go to do.
Did we not buy some generators a while back?
That was for work, like.
Huh?
That was for work, like.
Well, we have, some of the larger pumping stations, we do have generators right now. They're already installed. I guess, why I always think, I think most of this up there on 41, we put the large generator in there. I think we put...
And the backup one out of Perry Parkway?
Yeah, two.
Very big station.
Can you just say additional generators for additional pumping stations?
Well, yes, but more particularly, the Bear Branch Lift Station out on Bear Branch Road would have its own backup emergency generator that would kick in, rather than having to wait, if we, if we don't have a conflict about a portable generator going back out there to take care of it. And a portable generator, a lot of times, won't last as long as one of those permanent ones. And we'd have to do wiring either way for it, so I think it'd be a lot better for us to have permanent generators at these locations. As the ones they're talking about here are not all our lift stations, obviously, but the ones that are having significant growth, you know, and increase, and we just cannot afford to have those lift stations not working for two hours to three hours, and we'll just have some spills of problems there. And that's, that's why it's being recommended for these locations.
And that money's coming from what?
That would come from either the Squaw 12 or the Water City.
Questions about 3B?
Mm-hmm.
And we see the police department, it's got building security proposed, public safety built.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Row Tem and council. Can y'all hear me, you okay back here? If I stand here, I've got notes that I may refer to.
If you keep talking that loud, but when you go down to that whisper, I can't even...
I won't whisper, Mr. Moon. I'll talk loud enough, so that you and I can both hear. To recap just a little bit, we started this conversation over a year ago and some things have happened in regards to building security since we initially started. Part of that's the card control system that's been put in here and at City Hall. That has helped us secure parts of the police department already. In fact, all the traffic now is routed to the front lobby that faces Washington Street. And, so hence the proposal that I had made to the city manager in August, to go to develop an RFP to finish securing the building. In particular concern is the front lobby, because it provides access to the interior of the building and then the two offices that open onto the front lobby. Now, Major Phelps and I work in one of those offices, but so do a full-time and a part-time civilian employee. The other office that opens onto the, to the lobby is the court office, which has two full-time civilian employees. So, the proposal was made, the administration's recommendation to your body was to go ahead and move forward with securing the door at the far side of the lobby, so that the access to the rest of the building wasn't possible, but to not secure the two offices that open onto the lobby because of the appearance, the conditions do not warrant the public's perception of closing off the chief and municipal court from daily contact. And, of course, the idea never was to, to keep anybody from contacting us, just to control how that happens. This is common practice. There are eight criminal justice agencies just in the city of Perry of long, between state and courts and our, our department. Seven of those are fully controlled access, and the one that's not, of course, is Perry PD. There has been no change in customer service that I'm aware of, or access to the people that work in there, it's just a matter of how they get in and when they get in, but, you know, no significant delays, no denying of access. Unfortunately, it's the way of the world now. And, I've had civilians that work in those areas raise concerns to me about their safety and security. Like it or not, no matter how good a job we do in the police department, and we do a good job, some of the people that we interact with are just not happy to have that interaction. And, you know, sometimes there are substance abuse problems, or mental health issues, or just plain mad because there's domestic, we rested one, we didn't arrest the other, and on and on and on. And, on a rare, a regular basis, these people show up in the front lobby of the police department. If they turn right, they go into court where there's two civilians. If they turn left, they come in to the outer office where Major Phelps and I work and encounter two more civilians. And oftentimes, you know, they're upset and they're venting, and the only protection that these employees have is their wits and the panic alarm that they can push at their workstations. I felt it's incumbent on me as the police chief to bring these concerns to y'all and ask for, you know, a correction. We could easily do this. When we first looked at trying to make this building secure, because it's got lots of doors and all that, first run through it, the price estimates were around $90,000 and I knew that wasn't feasible. But, with closing off all the other entrances and making it that one lobby, which is where we're at now, then the part that remains to be done is to make that lobby an area that you have to be escorted from to see somebody. So, you know, the price tag for secure and all that's probably somewhere less than $30,000. We got a single estimate, just to give us a go-by, but with an RFP, we would, you know, get several estimates and take, you know, the one that was in the best interest of the city. The, and I don't wanna speak for those employees, but a couple of them are here tonight, if y'all wanna ask them, but, you know, they routinely deal with people, you know, Major Phelps and I have decades of experience between us. We're trained, we put our lives, are willing to put our lives on the line any day. But, that may not be the case in this situation. If you go to any of these other agencies in, in Perry, and I'll give you a handout in a minute, it's got a couple of photos of what that looks like, then, thank you, Janice, you go ahead and hand those out, then, you know, there's, there's really no loss of interaction, it's just in the way it's controlled. The, and I'm saying that employee safety is the paramount issue here. I don't think it's a perception issue, I think it's a safety and security issue. And, the building that we have, being the age it is and the way it was constructed, it wasn't constructed with security in mind, so it's a little bit of an issue, but by making the public entrance into the lobby and then controlling access to the two offices that open into the lobby, and controlling access out of the lobby to the rest of the building, then we have a workable solution. And, so, in that handout, I've kinda recapped what I'm talking about in a memo, which is the first thing, if you'll pick that up and look at it. Second thing is the list of the criminal justice agencies in Houston County. I do wanna mention too, that of all the criminal justice agencies and entities in Houston County, Perry PD is not secured, the front office of the sheriff's department's not secured, and that's at the desire of the constitutional officer that runs that office. Everything else is secure and has been for, for many years. I do agree with Mr. Gilmore that I hate that the state of the world dictates this, but I feel like it does. And I don't think we wanna be in a position of waiting until, until something happens when we can fix it and ensure that it doesn't happen. The third page is the memo from Mr. Gilmore to, to your body, and the fourth page is my original memo to him on the RFP. And then, you get to the first picture. Now, this is what you see when you walk in the lobby of Warner Robins Police Department. Now, it's a new building and, you know, purpose-built to be a secure facility, but the public walks in, they interact, whoever they need to talk to comes down and escorts them to wherever they need to go. Next picture's Centerville PD, similar kinda situation. You walk into a secure lobby, there's staff behind it, secure access, and they call whoever needs to interact with whoever comes in, they come escort them to the appropriate office. This is upstairs at the courthouse. The next picture's the Houston County District Attorney's Office. There again, a nice lobby you can walk into, a seating, with a staffed all the time, and, you know, a secure door into the rest of the office. And then that brings us to the two offices that open off, onto our lobby. And, as they exist right now, there's not much way to secure them, other than what we're proposing. Now, the municipal court, which is the first picture you see, we looked at making that door where you could still go in it, but then you have something similar to what you see in a bank with, with security over the top of the counter. Well, I can tell you, that was really expensive, when you do it with ballistic glass, and that was like, I think, $50,000 just by itself. So, we looked for an alternative... So we looked for an alternative, and our alternative was to make this door a walk-up service window. So you can interact with the public, and if they need to come in, then they can come through the secure door at the other end of the lobby into the office. But there's not really, with the way they do business, not that much need for that to happen at any rate. On that particular office, there's already another exit that exits into the interior of the building. So there's, you know, there's egress for whatever reason should happen and need it. And then the final picture is the door that comes into the outer office, you know, for the chief and the patrol commander. And there are four offices actually located behind this door. So the one, you know, where the secretary sits that you first see, there's one immediate to the left, which where Ms. Duffin is now, since y'all approved in last, in the current year's budget, the part-time administrative secretary. And then directly straight back is Major Phelps' office. The way it sets up though, he can't see out the door. And then to the far back left is my office, same thing. Unless I'm sitting down at the conference table, I can't see out the door either. If we made this also a walk-up service window, we would need to put another doorway into the interior hallway. We've had it checked, it's, construction-wise, it's feasible. It's not in a load-bearing wall that we can't work around. And I think that's about my pitch, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. The initial estimate was twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. I think when Mr. Gilmore and I were talking, we rounded it up to thirty, just to cover contingency as a target price. Not to say we want to have a contractor come in with a better idea that can make it cheaper. We've been over and over this with our staff. And we think we've, you know, gotten the changes that need to be made down to the minimum and, you know, in hopes of both making the building secure and keeping the cost down as much as possible. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I did provide you, like I say, a memo that has most of those points in it and other stuff because I figured that you probably want some time to study on it. But if you had any questions?
I think, I think, I don't have any questions, Chief, but I think it's needed. And I'm going to go to help get you all exactly what you need to say. And why are you standing up here, these folks, and they are unknown or who?
Too far from now, that's.
But you know, I think the idea is a good idea, and I think that, I think we need to move on it. Just like you said, a long way to something happening, we said we should have done it. And then the thing about, you're already conversational, Gilmore. I think it's good that you protect the employees, and you gotta be protective there. Because I was thinking the same thing, I said, if somebody come in the door, you need to have protection, you know. But these, what's going on these days, you don't never know what's going to happen. So I run being safe and sorry. I'm ready to move on now.
How far do we need to go? Because I've been down here for when there've been high-risk people with their water bill and tax bill. So I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how much protection we need to, to, if we're going to do this, to be moving in that direction as well, and protecting them as well. Because of that money, and I'm just saying.
That's a good point, that's right.
I have a hard time picking and choosing between which one of our employees we're going to keep safe and what we're, are or not going to do. But I think it needs to be a much broader view than just one department.
I agree, and I don't know how I forgot because I've been on there, and they have been over some of those folks sometimes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have some talk to us, I know.
I think, I think the primary thing is, which goes back to my original position that was sent to the chief that you were copying, is when this came up out at Leisure Services and when it came up at Customer Service, it was council's consensus that they did not want to set that type tone, you know, for our citizens who are coming in to interact with the city. Now, there are some differences relative to over at the police department. But I think you potentially have that same situation. If I want to come in and talk with the chief and I'm going to have to go through some type of security, if I'm going to go in and pay at municipal court, at least as I understand on their layout there and everything, you'll wind up having a line of people out there because they won't just, they want to let them in the back. Are you with me? So you gotta go up to that window, and that's what you're going to have to pay. More importantly, as Mr. Walker says, and the chief brings up some very good points, but if that's what's going to be done, then I think that you need to consider doing that across the board. Because otherwise, you'll have the other groups, you know, coming in and saying, well, we have some issues too, we have some concerns. You know, that type of stuff. As long, as far as I'm concerned, as long as you all are comfortable with that decision, you know, due to circumstances or whatever, and you feel that that's an appropriate position to take, then that's fine, but it will need to be consistent throughout.
I'm going to agree with that, like you said, we need to be consistent, I mean, I agree. Because if you want to take the chief's place, I never leave to protect all the employees, especially with the money that they're lost, you know.
It's obvious to everyone that I need my beauty sleep. And if something were to happen and we didn't do all that we could beforehand to prepare for that, then I think I would lose a lot of use of over that in terms of the safety of our employees. So I think it's something worth looking at and considering.
See, I, you know, I think today, we have no idea what happens. So in order to be safe, we need to do that. Look across the whole, at everyone. Because now you don't know what average Joe going to walk off the street in these days. He's a little just, just innocent. Don't know where to take, take him off. So I think we need to, I hadn't thought about that till you said it, hadn't thought about. But I've been down there when they have had issues over that customer service. And it looked like maybe a couple of times, then one or two people might want to jump over the counter. You know, so it really makes sense to kind of look at what we need to do to protect everybody as well as we can.
Do you think you can come back and look at other ways?
Well, at least from what I gather of the conversation, I think what we'll do is we'll proceed. You know, and then, yes, you go over the follow-up information, it's from the other location. The only other thing I would suggest on this too is that I think if we're, if we're going to take that standpoint, then we need to move to, and I don't know how quickly we'll do this, don't get me wrong, but we need to move to a place where there's one place that doesn't say it collects any of the cash and the payments. That you don't do it out at rural center, possibly, you just stop taking cash over at municipal. But you're, are you with me? See what I mean? So in other words, you have one location, which based on volume would be customer service right now, that you go and that's where you, if you're coming in to pay, that's where you go to pay. You know, for example, if I come in to get a building permit, so I go up to community development, they fill out all the paperwork, they send that down, but I go down to customer service, everybody with me, you know, to make that payment and have that transaction. You know, because there's obviously the other aspect, not only who comes in, but the attractiveness of the cash. And so if we're going to take that security, I think we need to start moving in that direction if you all are agreeing with. I don't know how soon, but I mean, moving in that direction.
So is it council's agreement to?
The chief's going to go ahead and move forward and then look at all this other. Right, and I mean, that's fine, you understand? Thank you. Item four, A, this is the recreational trail project. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We would like to make a proposal to you all, which is on the supplemental, which is concerning the recreational trail project. I know you have it in your packet, so I can see. All right, too bad, public, you're out of it. In your packet, the first thing that you have there is a map of the city area that shows what are referred to, or we refer to as destination parks. Destination parks are sites that have a number of activities that go on there. For example, Rojer Park is a destination park, Creekwood is a destination park. Everybody with me there? So you can see we have Creekwood, Heritage Park, Rojer Park, and Calhoun Park. We are also proposing to you all conceptually, these may not be exact locations, but conceptually, two other proposed destination parks. One up in the northeast section, everybody see where I am there? And then the other down in the southeast section. All anticipated for the growth of our service area, because all of this is in the Perry service area. So working from, and now also want to remind you all that the Houston County Board of Commissioners were very gracious, well, voters were, but Houston County agreed to it, that the destination parks out on the eastern side, you may remember that the county has put money into the SPOS eighteen, you know, for assisting on those parks. So assuming that that, you agree with the destination park, if you take a look at the next presentation, you can see outlined a series of trails, what we call the recreation trails. And underneath this concept, as you can see, you will be able to, if you are so inclined and desired, to go all the way around the city. Everybody see that? And connect every one of our destination parks. Now, along the line, you may connect to other type of things, you know, for example, schools and all that type of stuff. But the initial starting point of this would be these trails. And the trails, as you can see, some of them, at least as it stands right now, because we don't have any other defined path, on the northern part there runs along Santaford Road. Everybody see where I am there? You know, to come up and connect with some of our subdivisions, you know, we have up there, I'm sorry, Langston Road, not Santaford Road. Up on Langston Road where you have some of the subdivisions, and then you come and loop back down, go along Fannie Gresham Creek, connect over, go along three forty-one to Heritage Park if you want, or there's another way connecting back to Creekwood. Everybody see where I'm calling, I was coming around? And you swing back down, cross over I seventy-five. Trail eventually will go down to connect with Flat Creek, State Park. And then you see another connection looping around there, which actually goes through the fairgrounds. I have already met with Mr. Schimpf. Mr. Schimpf has met with his, the board, and they are on board for this project and concept. You know, they'd just like to know, have some input relative, the final route would be through their site. I said, it's your choice, you know, you'll go, we'll go where you tell us to. Then you come back around, some of this you may recognize is already being done, like Whitetail Trail, you know, connecting Old Recentennial Park with Creekwood Park. And the Waleka Trail, that goes down Big Indian Creek. And you may remember, we've got the extension being constructed now, which will bring you back down to Larry Walker Parkway and the Fairgrounds site. And then we continue along Big Indian Creek. We have already had some property owners come in and express some interest along Big Indian Creek, you know, to make this tie-in connection. The walking trail you see coming up on the left, upper, or I'm sorry, upper right, coming back down to Perry Parkway, that follows along our sewer right away, you know, the northeast outfall, you know, which you already own. So a lot of this type of stuff will have some right away, over time. I want to emphasize it, this is not a project that's going to be done in the next two years or anything like that. But what we are presenting to you is the overall concept. And then after that, you see in your package, you have a couple of pictures. Some of the trail stuff are initially maybe just cleared out in kind of a gravel. Everybody with me on the first, you know, picture there? But eventually, particularly as they become more popular, they'll wind up being paved, you know, like we've done with the Waleka Trail and a portion of Whitetail Trail, as they become more popular and more used. And of course, you will also have some like to have on the Whitetail Trail where you have overlooks, you know, or boardwalks crossing over wetlands. Here, your last photo, depending on what area we wind up going through. We've had some preliminary discussion with staff on this. And there are a number of very important factors, I think, that they have brought up. You know, one is from Robert's department. I don't mean to totally speak for him, but there have been a number of contacts from different businesses that ask, what do you do on this type of stuff? What do we have as an amenity, you know, that kind of distinguishes your community and that type of stuff? It's a very good selling point. Mr. Guy's department is getting more and more inquiries about what can we do for this, about some type of exercise thing. You know, we'd like this alternate transportation, so on and so forth. There have been some developers who have expressed an interest in participating, or do you have some type of plan like this? Because we would like to tie in, you know, some of our developments. In Georgia, and certainly also nationwide too, these trails are very popular. They become a selling point for subdivisions, for example, that come in and tie into them. And it's just a very beneficial program. So if you are agreeable with this, we will recommend to you that you consider tomorrow adopting this as your recreation trail concept plan, and then we will proceed from there. Now, every single time we talk about a leg or whatever the case, maybe we'll be back to you to say, here's what we're talking about doing, if there is any cause for, you know, that type of stuff and everything. But we'd definitely like to have this concept plan adopted to you so that we can show the public, you know, primarily, but also anyone else who is interested about what the city is doing with this. You may or may not be familiar with some of the very big success stories we've had in Georgia. For example, it's certainly more urbanized type of, you know, but Atlanta's Beltway that they have going around. And there's also the Silver Comet, I think you just said? That goes through and connects several counties now and everything, is extremely, extremely popular. I have five council member items.
No, sir.
Just a false prayer with this operation, I suppose, so those back five. Parker here, items. Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
You clear it?
Nothing, sir.
Just that, nothing, sir. Ms. Smith?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing, sir.
Anything for media?
No.
Yeah? Mr. Gilmore, you have anything? If not, we're good.